Alright, I'd like to call this May regular board meeting to order. Time is seven o'clock and the first item of business is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the right hand of the justice of the world.
Let the room reflect that all members are present with the exception of Josh Hennett. I'd like to report that the meeting is properly noticed and per policy it is being recorded and livestreamed. Item number five, the next item of business is the election of board officers. Now, there's a couple of different ways to do that. We could do one at a time as simple president, vice president, clerk, treasurer. Or you can accept nominations for a slate of officers and do it all in one. And if we do individually, just know that when we open up for nominations and the order that they're nominated is actually the order we vote and the first person that gets the majority of votes to be the person elected. Any questions on the Roberts rule of order? Any of that process? Can we just do a slate? If not, I'll open up to you guys to discuss if you want to do a slate or individually. I think that'd be the first decision.
I'd make a motion that we do a slate with the past officers is the same.
I'd second that.
Okay, you have a motion Jeff Redmond and second Derek Miller to do a slate of officers of the past or slash current board officers. That would be Erica here because President Josh Hennett as the Vice President, Jeff Redmond as a clerk, and Vince Trudell as a treasurer. Is there any discussion or objection to that? Are you good with that? Uh, we don't have to close for nominations. So then we would just need a voice vote, so we'll do that this time, although the favor of that slate of officers indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Turn it over to President Eric P. from the rest of the committee.
Welcome visitors. Is there any public comment? We'll move on to highlight on you is eighth grade foods business class Sammy Gibson and Jenny Hommer. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Again.
Are you just gonna come to everybody?
I already owe your head an hour last year.
Sorry.
This happens. I think ninety-nine percent of the time we always have this, gotta, yeah, extend the screen or F8 or something.
Who's the short guy in the back?
Okay, we wanted to highlight the collaboration project that we started this year between the food class and the business class. I'm Sammy Gibson and I teach middle school and high school business education.
I'm Ben Hommer, Eighth Grade Foods. Alright, so we, we meet four times together throughout our six-week rotation. We pick out the recipe what my kids are gonna make and they decide on a group name. So we have groups of about three or four mine and three or four hers in each group. Second time we meet after about another week, we calculate how much everything is gonna cost. We have the kids calculate. Then we do test batch, quality check was a couple days ago, and then bake sale, everything was today. And we'll, we'll go with more on that, but that's kind of the overview of what we're doing.
We had a six times worth a year at about six weeks end like.
So we start just a brief overview of whatever going on. We hit them with kitchen and food safety. So shocks and burns and the basic things, how to avoid, and the food safety with storage and handling of everything. And we get into reading recipes. So what is a recipe? How do you read it? Some are amazing at it, some have no idea, which is I, we teach them. What directions, what they all mean, so what, what tools they have to measure everything, whether you have a cup, you have a half cup, how to do some basic conversions between them. Then we go no fail puppy chow, hard to mess up, might not look right, but it's gonna taste fine no matter what you do. And then when we do cookies, we start with the, um, that's the tollhouse. Everybody makes the same batch, just troubleshoot everything. So you, the importance of why you have to do butter and sugar and then the eggs and the dry stuff and you can't roll it all together. So we'll have six different groups, same exact ingredients, same station, same everything. And you'll get six plenty of different variations. But then we can talk about that so that when we make these cookies, we do cookies three times, the same one, and then whatever they picked out in that first meeting, we pretty much, within reason, anything they wanna do. We had snickerdoodles and peanut butter cookies and those witch hand blossoms and macarons we've had kids try. Mid-stuff, lots of stuff.
And who's in these classes? Have they chosen or is it everybody?
Eighth graders, um, they get to pick what classes they choose. Besides, my class is a mandatory class, um, his is an option one. Um, but it's only eighth graders every semester.
Yeah.
Um, so kind of coming back to the four times that we meet, uh, the first time, like he said, it's all about the collaboration between the two groups, where we can ask the and the business name. Uh, the second time we meet, he's gonna talk about the calculations that we go through.
Make them do a lot of math. So everything, when you buy it from a store, unless you're going to the tally mark, you can't buy two eggs or one egg. So about halfway down, twelve eggs, at least at the time, personally was a little over two dollars and then one egg. So that's probably the easiest of them, being divided by twelve, figure out how much it costs. Some of these are tough, so it's steps and problem solving and just knowing what to type into the calculator. And it doesn't give it to you easy on the baking sugar. It says five hundred and sixty-seven servings of two teaspoons. So how you get there to half a cup, we walk them through and then that's why you have to know on the teaspoons or tablespoon, tablespoons or cups. And then they get their total. And on this one, we didn't have the number of cookies yet, but if their recipe made twenty-four, buy it by twenty-four. This is a really low one, is the chocolate chips and everything, all the additions that add up. So the sugar cookie is pretty low. Most we've had is nine or ten dollars if you've got peanut butter and oatmeal, you know.
And then a few weeks after we met, meet again to do the test batch and the quality, so my class will come down about halfway through the hour and just check the cookies. Are they the right size? Are they the right ingredients? Do they gonna make any changes? Lot of patience. Uh, and then the very last time we meet, which is on sale day, uh, my class has all of the packaging ready to go and we go down and package once they're cool. And then, um, the end of that day, which was again today, we, um, set up during pause time the goose and, um, got ready to sell. So a little bit more about my class, what I do on my end when we're not meeting is we start the rotation by going over goods and services, the difference between them. What is entrepreneurship, the risks and the rewards? Uh, and then they make a logo, but we talk about color psychology and why businesses use the colors that, um, they do. And the kids have to come up with the colors or their logo with the colors that they want to represent their company. And then throughout the rotation, they do a nine-side presentation. So this is, this is an example one. And these are all the different things that we talk about throughout the rotation. So company name, they have their description. Uh, this is their color psychology, so they put why they chose purple. Um, go through this kind of fast, trying to show you some of the things we talked about, but, um, we talk about competition. What is, uh, for direct competition and direct competition, and we talk about the strengths and weaknesses. They look at target markets. We break it down into a student target market and a teacher target market, and we talk about demographics and psychographics and how we're gonna advertise to each one of those groups. Then we talk about pricing and that's why it was so important that we calculated the prices before because they have to figure out what they're gonna do for markup. We talk about pricing strategies, um, how they're going to determine with their prices. Some of them are really creative and do bundle deals. We had a group this time that made little coupons and handed them out to teachers and said that they could give them to students as little incentives to bring down, um, for like good behavior. Teachers could decide if they wanted to keep themselves or hand them out. And, um, a lot of them turned them in as coupons too, so that's kind of cool. Then we talk about roles in businesses, um, like a very big business, how there's many different departments. Or a small entrepreneurship business, um, how that person is in charge of everything. So they pick a title that they want and their roles. Promotion's probably the longest time that we talk or longest unit we talk about. Um, they make promotion to their student target market and their target, target market, put it around the school, make advertisements, send out emails. And then we look at the results and reflect on it. And, um, this group, I think, was one of our highest profit groups. Um, they didn't sell all their cookies, but they had profits of thirty-six, um, dollars on their cookies. And altogether, um, where does the money go? So far, we, we wanted to just kind of test it out in house this year to kind of see what funds were gonna look like. Um, and we donated seven hundred and ten dollars to three different places, backpack program, Alive and DC trip. Um, so overall, we donated or we raised in sales about a thousand dollars and we kept about thirty percent of that to cover some of our expenses.
This is great because it hits, no buzzword maybe was interdisciplinary stuff and now it's, it's a shift. John Hattie and the collective teacher advocacy first is it wouldn't work with one of us. So it's, it's both of us together and it's stuff like this that we can do, which is awesome for the kids.
And they take ownership, so that's really fun.
Yeah, we, yeah, they have pretty much unlimited freedom with very few restrictions, as long as maybe a bidding of a name here and there. And they, they haven't had a failure really during the day, they wouldn't be able to sell. So it's all coming together.
Really cool.
There it is.
No cookies?
One group today did one for a dollar or two for three dollars. And they, they got to be welcome. Wow, there's a company in heaven, half a ton. We got one of each group today.
Thank you.
He wouldn't need one, but.
What a great program. Thank you for doing that.
Sorry. Are, uh, everyone kind of, do they package it separately too and design a package or?
I, I kind of bottom bulk, so they get options of like a polka dot or a clear bag. So I have like five different options of bags. And then, um, beginning of the year, we had a lot more time without the snow days. Um, so I was making labels for each group. The last year rotations, we just totally ran out of time, so I, I'd like to get back to that next year so that they can have like their logo on their package.
Yeah.
Um, it was just kind of a time thing this year, the last year.
Individual nutrition.
Yeah.
There's websites, you can type in the recipe and then you can put the exact amount of cookies. It'll make you a tape for one of them.
We did that in the first rotation and then like I said, we kind of ran out of time, but I, yeah, we're gonna try to do that again next year.
Awesome.
As a parent with kids, I'd also like you to have more time, not all the snow days.
You're one of those parents with kids, huh?
Yeah.
So chance maybe just for the board, the six rotations, you know, if you mentioned the different nations to make it.
Yeah, so actually that's new this year, but the increased opportunities that food class has provided, um, our seventeen-year-old, sweet world of the apple bowl, woodwork shooter, and just generic location. The eighth graders have nine and different options. But realized in years past, we kind of tempted in the same structure as the fifth, sixth, and seventh graders, which is five rotations. So with five rotations for five, six, and seven, it's pretty much set with the same requirements. But when we saw the different options at the eighth graders, how they had in front of them, we just adjusted and added a sixth rotation. It, it got them in four or five days probably. But it's all worth it to have any more kids, a chance to do things like this.
Are, uh, are, are they allowed to repeat? You know, somebody loved the, the food rotation.
Don't they pause on that, Tim? No, I answered that. Most part. There are some kids that accept and they're just kind of accept. Different things that we need to essentially.
Yeah. They need to do computers and health and foreign language with the table corner, so that's half.
Got it.
For the most part, they're playing to choose from, but there are a few cases where somebody's really just drawn to this down and for lots of different reasons.
Yeah, and most of them, they're, they're sides of it because nearly everybody chooses food and class. So they get to do, whenever orders, they'll do the cookie with me and then it gets to the business side for vice versa. So by this natural teaching, everybody in her class had done my side of it, everybody in my classes, her side of the match, but then Jake nearly is a lot.
And next year, um, I was just having this conversation with our seventh teacher today. We want to look into, uh, operating like some, um, 3D printing stuff or stickers or something like that, that we can also like have some of my business kids go and team up with his class, some of my business kids go up with food class, and then sell more options. So that's kind of what we're looking at for next year too.
Did you share Sammy the way that it's how you had to determine where the throwing team go to?
Oh, yeah, um, the kids died. Each rotation I have, um, I told the kids, um, a few different options in house, like I said, I got this year. Um, and they voted and I think we had three rotations to the backpack program, two to Alive and one to the DC trip.
This one felt more like shark tank or something.
Ten percent same. Chocolate chips and you can get involved for us.
They say cookies first.
They were delicious. Yeah, you knew I was gonna eat it.
I waited till. Here's the canary.
Thank you.
Moving on to number eight, comments by board members and superintendents. We've got the referendum update.
Um, yeah, we meet, uh, three, three times a week, uh, um, high school, uh, Wednesday mornings and John Site, John Trudell there. Elementary, uh, Wednesday afternoons, John Site there, the two separate, uh, site superintendents, uh, which is nice. And then Thursday mornings, we have the owner architect contract for the OAC meetings, which is more small group, uh, more focused on budget type things. So, um, there is a Stacy put the, the live stream or time lapse, uh, camera on our, on our website showing the track updates. You can see, that's kind of the home page right there, just kind of see the progress there, the track. And then you can go backwards, of course, from there and see the progress. Um, that one, uh, with the, with the track and field, you know, uh, that's the bulk of most everything right now. High school project, they had to remove, um, about three feet of soil, um, so there's just not.
I had a question on that.
Yeah.
So with that additional fill or say it pulled a bunch of typical ham and fill out clay, you have trashy fill. Is that, is that part of their, was that hard bid? Is that something that we have to pick up the difference in? That's a lot of all on.
No, so that's all in there. There's no contingency on that. The contingency would be if they have to replace, um, maybe the bad soil with, with better soil. And I, I remember I, it was minimal to none right now. It had, they did the, uh, was it compact test? It was just a few spots, so if it is, Greg speak up if you know any different. If it is, it's minimal, it hasn't really been. So that's so, yeah, it was not good soil. They found, when they took it out, it was kind of like a halfway point. Like half of the field was decent fill and then I think they just, I don't know, speculating, you're like, uh, we ran out of good stuff. So just filled it in and that's why that, so much clay and stuff. And even the sand that was there was like a washed sand that wasn't binding very good. So that's why we just had so much water sitting in the field. It was poor soil, so we won't have that issue moving forward, obviously. But, uh, they take out three feet and then they, they're putting in this main storm sewer, basically. There's a storm sewer underneath that hole inside the track. It drains water out and then with smaller drain tiles and stuff that feed that, it's quite a system underneath. They fill it in with good soil. They're right in the middle of putting in the main, um, sewer right now. And, uh, then they're just gonna keep, uh, putting in the pipe and connecting everything and then they'll fill it with good stuff. And then ultimately it's got, I think about six inches or a, um, foot of gravel on top. And then actually the turf goes right on ground.
Was there any drainage there before or was it all just natural?
There was, there was drainage, yes. You know, in the last referendum, we added another drain field out to north of the fence too. Um, so some of that infrastructure at least was, was done. Yeah, there was a drain in each corner that was supposed to go off, but yeah. Um, so that's where they're at with that. Um, they'll start the turn up the front, the main parking lot, uh, June twelfth. The last dance recital was flood day, June eleventh. Um, so they'll get started with that. We have, um, plans for keeping the building open and, and, and access, et cetera. Safety is always the first thing on the agenda every meeting, you know, talking about that in school and really well. Um, uh, and then at the elementary.
Virtual school starts right after school.
And the virtual school, oh yeah, start right away. They actually asked permission to rip into a few beams in the ceiling in one bathroom in the, in the, uh, auditorium lobby, just to get some measurements because structural steel lead time, they want to know exactly what's in there. And I said that it'd be minor as long as they clean it up, um, you know, because we got some dance recitals and graduations, et cetera, some people going in minor. And then that main pillar column on the facade of the auditorium entrance, same thing, they gotta get into that so it'll look like somebody tore into it, but that's okay. Cause the lead time on that virtual school is the shortest window. They, they can't start till school's out and then.
They'll have it done by, in the summer, possibly.
So the parking lot is be a big one, obviously. Um, fortunately, the timing, I just found out Monday. I think the chief of police told me, we're gonna be tearing up Broadway in front of the high school, unfortunately, starting Wednesday. So that's a little bit of a hiccup, but the nice thing, it'll be all new blacktop, that old stretch and from, from the road in front of the school will be all new blacktop.
Are they gonna add any turn lanes or anything?
Yes. Yeah, there's a bus loop.
It is, it'll, but I mean, on the, on the street, on the city street, on the township street, are they?
Not that I'm aware of. Just sidewalks and widening it, uh, it's safer out to school grant the village got, so it'll be safe for kids to walk up and down Broadway.
That'll be nice.
Yeah. At the elementary, the, you know, four classroom and resource room addition, um, again, excavation was first. It'd take a lot of soil out, put in the footings, then they put in the foundation. Um, it's about three feet from the footings up to ground level of a whole block all the way around and that went up really quick. Um, they had to switch over gas and electric because where it goes into the building now, the station was going. Um, so it really was nice to clean that up and be able to buy that lot because we may or may not have had our power going across that lot corner by a couple feet anyway, so it's nice to have a nice clean survey and own that. Uh, Greg, Greg, I think started at five AM on a Saturday and worked all through the day and through the night with no sleep and finished up on a Sunday just supervising Excel and, or B and B. And, um, got power switch over two weekends ago now.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and they had to wait for that to get done to finish the block. So that's all, we just wanted it today. The scaffolding, by the way, is amazing what they have now for scaffolding. Like, it's amazing. Yeah, it's huge. Anyway, um, so yeah, the black walls, he said, we'll have all of the walls up in five days. Two, two and a half, something went in, it's gonna go fast. Then the, you know, steel girders and the roof and the brick and outside. And so we've picked out, uh, we picked out the color on the track surface. That was one of the things, um, we picked out bricks on both additions, um. Yep, pretty cast panel samples are coming. The bricks, like, it's hard. You can see if you look at elementary closely that they're not exact. But, you know, because they did, even like he said, they pull, the same companies pulling from different parts of the earth with clay and you're gonna get slight variations. But mold has been really good at getting those color samples and working with, um, concrete company, one, one local company that makes a lot of concrete in our area here, had, um, issues getting us what we needed. So we had to switch companies and get different brick for the elementary, but, you know, even that, even that, it's like, it's not all the same brick. It's three different blends of maple red and buckwheat or something at eighty percent, sixty percent twenty-twenty and, um, so just finding that match is important. So yeah, that's where we're at. Things are going really well on, on getting that two-week head start in April. Uh, certainly helped. You know, we kind of had a washout, pretty wet last week for about four days where they couldn't do anything on the track and field. But he has at least a two-week cushion. He feels pretty good about him. Um, time and still, um, well in your budget, so that's good. Playground, we talked about quite a bit today, the new playground and a port in place, um, surface rather than wood chip. So that, that'll be really nice to have that as well. Anything else missing? Jen, Greg, you're.
You didn't talk about it at your meeting, but, uh, I saw an email from Joe. He's working on the survey to get the one parcel so that we can annex it into the village. That's underway. Joe's amazing, but he found stakes that nobody else had found and it'll be fine. Just a process.
Yep. That's in the village's hands now, right? We did what we needed to do with, uh, annexation and the survey.
We haven't gotten the finals.
He hasn't got the survey done yet.
Okay.
Any other questions in the referendum? You're really getting moving along here. Switch schools out, a lot of moving parts thing.
So we can move on to meeting confer, meeting update. Vince, Dave, um, Tim, Jen, and I were all there and that was support staff and, and teachers and.
They were all together.
Was there just one?
Yeah, it was.
It was a, it was a good dialogue. People came, it was really neat how they came with, these are good things. And then, you know, people came with, this is what we're thinking, these are solutions, which was just a really good dialogue, I thought, positive and.
Yeah, I mean, they didn't really have much to complain about. Minor things that, it seemed like they had troubled most of them, which knows they just haven't been talking with us. A lot of them just came with AI.
Yeah, yeah, just introduce themselves and say thank you.
I think it confirmed what we already know. We got a whole slew of employees from cooks to bus drivers, teachers. They're all dedicated to the district and they're, they're the best employees around. They, they have a few issues they brought up, but like you said, they had solutions, but, um,
it's, it's, there's no doubt in my mind that, that they're, they're dedicated to what we want and the ultimate goal is that is everything's for kids. And, you know, that's, um, what was it? The housekeeping, you know, I mean, they, they're so proud of their work, we won't even notice the things that they think they miss or whatever. It's, they're, it's just an impressive, it was a good feeling to just sit down with them and reassure everything that we already suspected, I guess. So, so great job hiring and everything. Compensation requests are fudge dependent, which general, I'll go into great detail and close session here and, um, give an update on that.
I think one theme throughout all of the support staff meetings was the thankfulness that the board paid them for the snow days this year. That was huge. So.
Are we gonna do that going forward?
Yeah. It's like Tim said, it was, it's already budgeted. It's like, it's like a no-brainer almost, so.
They're very appreciative of everything.
Yeah, and the flexible work schedule that some of those jobs allow, people that, you know, that have kids in school and they're able to work during the day and still be there for their kids. You know, it's really satisfying having them all come in, so.
If there's nothing else, we can move on. Uh, there are no specific rotations at this time. So then we'll move to financial reports.
It's a bank account balances of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Assistant State Bank checking, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and four dollars and eighty-three cents. Assistant State Bank Money Market, three million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Assistant State Bank Money Market Fund forty-sixth, fifty-four dollars, twenty-nine cents. Uh, Assistant State Bank Money Market Suicide Prevention, seventeen thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, Fund Thirty-nine Debt Service, hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-three cents. Uh, Fund Forty-nine Debt Service, seventeen million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents for a total fund balance of only two million, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and eighteen cents. Welcome to approve.
Alright, so Vince, with the motion, Jeff second. Alright, all in favor? Moving on to consideration of consent agendas.
Motion to approve consent agenda is presented.
Alright, so Vince, with the motion, Lance second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I, I.
Motion carries. Um, next is administrative reports.
All right, the student enrollment report, there's one thousand six hundred twenty-one students in seats, uh, in May. Um, as compared to one thousand six hundred thirty-three at the start of the year, so there was some attrition there, students in seats, however. Virtual, uh, charter school and our open enrollment grew at typical pace, we're at two hundred and seventy-three students and. Charter school for May is compared to two hundred and eighty-eight this time last year, we have forty-nine district residents in our virtual. Full-time school and seventy-one part-time district residents. And lastly, just looking at the, uh, open enrollment in, we have four hundred and one students opening rolled in at the time of this report versus one hundred and thirty-seven open and rolled out, and that's of two sixty-four.
All right, moving on.
Can I ask a question, Jen, this came up, Tim and I lunch. If we had a Minnesota student that wanted to be in our virtual school, we wouldn't get state aid, but could we enroll them and have them pay?
As far as we probably could have parent paid tuition.
I think that's something we should look into. I think we should look into that.
Profit center. Profit center.
Exactly. So I, just a question that came up.
I know we can't accept them as far as.
What would that tuition look like for a year? What would that tuition look like for a year?
Well, what do we get now for?
I think it would be similar to the open enrollment, so it'd be eight thousand, two twenty-four a year.
I mean, there may be some parents that wouldn't pay that, then they get a computer, they have certified teachers, they get counselors, I mean, it's. So I just thought that was an interesting thing.
Check into it and get back to you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. All right, Dave, you, uh, gonna do the key work of our school board?
For the like, uh, thanks Scott Klinger, thank you for the hours' labor, and most importantly, your leadership in helping put up the new girls softball scoreboard. Also like to thank Eric Miller, thank you for the hours' labor, most importantly, running the lift and helping put up the new girls softball scoreboard. And like to thank Scott Versov, thank you for the hours' labor and, most importantly, sharing your expertise and. Helping put up the new girls softball scoreboard. And the board would like to also thank Brian Copel, thank you for your three years of service and dedication on the school board, serving and leading the student staff and the community of SCC.
Moving on to number fourteen, our core agenda items, A, consideration and recommended student fees for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Right, we did have several changes, um, mostly at the high school level, I think it has to, a lot of it has to do with increased cost for like food classes and. And stuff like that, but on the sheet, it kinda has lunch prices, we'll go through that in a minute. Um, they are requesting an increase from five to ten dollars for the parking permits, again, I think it's, uh. The cost of the supplies to get the permits and stuff is increasing. Um, Brian Jackson would like to increase all of the activity tickets by five dollars. Those have not been increased and I don't think they've ever been increased since, since I've been here.
I don't remember.
So I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, um, will still remain free for senior citizens. Um, athletic fees would be the same, AP test fees are increasing slightly, about two dollars per test. Um, another change was, but we added biotechnology and that will have a ten dollar fee. Baking and pastry arts is increasing by five dollars, up to thirty. Uh, veterinary science and foods one and two are also all increasing by five dollars. Otherwise, everything else is remaining the same as last year.
Maybe all the lunch prices remain the same with inflation away with us.
But we just went through an increase on that, right?
It's been two years ago that we'd increased it five cents for lunch.
Then wasn't there a state mandated one or something, but that was for the adult tickets or something?
Yeah, and for many years prior to that, we were required to raise it ten cents, so I think we were so far ahead. Um, as far as lunch pricing, when the state was mandating us to increase it by a minimum of ten cents every year. That we've been able to keep costs under control, last year, um, we did. The state increased the funding for all the free meals for students under COVID relief. And we weren't experiencing the increased costs in food because Chartwell's already had their contract set. For the year, so we added a lot of money into our fu- fund, uh, fund balance that we now. Are, have been spending down this year, cause DPI will only let us keep three months worth of expenditures. In that account, so we've been working on spending that down, they've been getting a lot of new equipment, I know Sandy had mentioned when she was here last month. Um, but yeah, we, we wanna keep lunch prices the same as this year, I think it's gonna be really close. Um, as far as cost goes, but if we dip into our fund balance a little more for that, I think. You know, we can, we definitely have the funds to be able to do that.
And all of the enhancement that Chartwell talked about, that's all. Maybe I just, out of the, uh, either whatever it is.
Yep.
Cover enhancements, that's possible.
When we get to the annual meeting this year, you are going to see that revenue was seven hundred and fifty thousand. And expenditures were a million, but that's what we want to be doing at this point. Cause we need to spend down that fund balance, and then next year, they will be, you know, more equal.
It's a motion?
It is a motion.
Great, I'll make a motion to approve the recommended. Uh, student fees for the school year twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, this presented.
So Vince made the motion, Dave second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to B, consideration of recommended lunch prices for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, so if you have any, any other questions on the.
So move.
Second.
Jeff second, or Jeff made the motion, Vince second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, consideration of recommended building usage in auditorium fees for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So we have a board policy that's from nineteen ninety-four, I think Kelly had said. That have all of our building usage fees on there, and we wanted to pull that out, so over the next month or two. Um, that's gonna show up as one of the board policies that you'll be working on. But we thought it would be easier if we had those fees pulled out of that board policy, so it's easier to update if and when we wanna make changes. So as for now, basically, everything is the same as it was in the board policy from nineteen ninety-four. I kept all of the rates the same, just because I felt like we do have some other. Um, like auditorium usage fees we wanna increase and, and some of the other things that we talked about for student fees. So these would remain the same, the only thing that would change would be the rates for a custodian or a cook. In the event that, you know, it's after building our, then on weekends and stuff. So you can see those, those changes listed below.
I remember we talked about moving those out of the policy, we just never did it.
Yeah.
I remember Brian was trying to, like, what are we gonna do, cause he, you know, the dance studio needs to set prices today for next year, send the contracts, yeah.
So then that's the next two pages are the old rates for the auditorium and then the new rates. Um, what we would like to increase that too, and that was what we had talked about doing last year. But it was after our reorganizational meeting, so we thought that we should hold off. And do that all at the same time, so that will be also pulling that out of that policy. Any specific questions on?
We have any sense of other auditorium fees, are we similar, are we high?
Randy Fiver was the one that kind of did all the research on that.
And we were consistent then.
Yeah, so, and being a year later, I would assume that's still pretty close.
Need a motion? So move.
Yeah.
Jeff made the motion, Lance second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. So consideration of approval of the Tofara CBP warranty with the Tofara Financial Services.
So we are going to table that when I received the actual copy of the lease and said that it would start immediately upon approval. And Chad wants that to start on July first, so we're trying to get the language revised so that it will start on July first, they did, couldn't have it ready for us tonight. So we might be able to bring it back in June with the revised language, if not, it'll be July with the current language. But then we'll be after the first of the, of the new year.
Current one expires June thirtieth?
We, we currently have it with a different company, and that I, I'm not quite sure, but I would think it's right around the end of the year.
Do, do students turn them in at the end of the year?
Yes.
So the school have all of them over the summer anyways.
Correct, yes. Through, um. Currently fifth grade, you know, and lower, keep, keep them in the classrooms, I think changing at the sixth grade next year, so. Yeah, sixth graders and up tournament thing of the year.
And the new lease with Tofara is about seven thousand dollars a year less than what we're currently paying.
What services do these guys provide?
Um, when the Chromebook is damaged and if we can't fix it in-house, we have a company that we send it to right now. And, but we have, they have like bags that we fill, so if, we have to wait until we get like twenty Chromebooks before we can even send them off. And this company is local, they're based out of Saint Paul. Um, so they actually will come here, I think we have to get them to Roberts, but, cause they work with Hudson School District as well. So they'll pick them up however often they're coming this way, if it's weekly or, or whatever, so it sounds like it's a good deal. And all of our new purchased Chromebooks will have that same warranty, so this is for like all of our existing Chromebooks.
And so we just have a question on, on line.
Okay, so now we can move, is there any more discussion or questions on that? So we'll move on to discussion regarding the preliminary twenty twenty, or twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
So I don't know if maybe you wanna start off a little bit, Jim, with just what the information that you have from Shannon Zimmerman?
Yeah, so, um, Shannon Zimmerman and then, um, State Superintendent Jill Underlee and John Johnson, they spoke, all three of them. Friday, they spoke at our PAC meeting and had a conversation, Shannon Zimmerman, Jeff has been in contact with as well, he's our. State representative, local state representative, he's also in the joint committee in finance, which is made up of about thirteen or fifteen. Members, both Democratic and Republican Party, um, and they basically make all, the committee meets, they have listening sessions on all the different parts of the budget. They make the votes to go to, uh, the Senate and House, so they ultimately typically Senate and House follow their recommendations, so. They, um, they found out, uh, Representative Zimmerman, so they will be, uh, acting on the education portion of the bio budget until the first or second week of June. You know, we, we gotta make staffing and, and wage decisions now, um, and he acknowledges this, like, that's. Should be fixed, it's, it's hard, it's difficult for schools to be guessing with hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, so anyway, um. The latest information, we try to say, eh, where are you leaning, you know, at least to get some, uh, educated guess and, uh. You know, I, I understand, they have to be non-committal, right, uh, until this decision's made, but, um, he recognizes, he. You know, Representative Zimmerman said, it's not gonna be the one thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars, what we asked for per pupil, plus increase in special ed from. Thirty to sixty this year and then to ninety the second year, it's not gonna be that much, it's not gonna be zero. So it's gonna be something, so, um. New information that I heard later in the morning at our meeting from John Johnson, Deputy State Superintendent, is the word they hear from their lobbyists is, um. Is, uh, there really is no appetite for spending more than a billion, one billion on education. Now, there's a six point one, I believe, is the latest, five point nine, maybe is the latest revenue, reporting that came out surplus. Um, yes, I get it, right, just like on a micro level, this board can't spend all their money on wages and benefits, there's other things, transportation and. And food service and bricks and mortar, so I get it, they have it on a different level statewide with. All state workers and prisons and. I mean, they, I mean, from Special Olympics to Trout Unlimited, right, I mean, there's everything in, in the budget that they have to consider. Education's the biggest one, that's the biggest chunk, now their philosophy is, let's save it to the end, of course, I'm biased, I'd say let's. Prioritize and put the biggest chunk first, but I get the, there, there, there's a, there's a, um, strategy to both, I get it, they'll know kind of what's left maybe at the end, but. So that was when I heard one billion, that was the first time I heard one billion, is what they're gonna. Best, the word on the street is, so then like, all right, let's do the math, so then, and, and they're gonna increase from thirty to fifty percent is what they're. The word on the street is, well, thirty to fifty percent for spend is equivalent to, um. Five hundred million dollars, half a billion, so there's half right there, which is good, but it doesn't, it's not a half a billion dollars to us, unfortunately, it's complicated with the transfer general go into. So we did the rough math of eighty-five thousand student, eight hundred and fifty thousand students in Wisconsin, public education students divided by half a billion is, comes out to five hundred and thirty-three dollars. So that's our best guess based on what we know from those that know it. Um, so that's what Jen is, is running the budget on, five hundred and thirty-three per pupil increase and special ed increasing from thirty to fifty percent. Now, you know, and she'll say what that means with her budget assumptions here coming up, um. But yeah, things change and the joint finance committee comes down and it's more than five hundred and thirty-three, a substantial amount that makes a difference, then. They come back and revise the budget for the annual meeting is the next step, and then the final budget is until the end of October, but. It's really a precarious position, precarious position to be in, you know, to do our best guess with. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we do have a fund balance. You, you know, uh, you know, some schools say, well, we have extra money, well, extra money has a lot of strings attached, you can only spend it on. Basically, improving student, um, outcomes because of the pandemic and, so super complicated, but with that said, that's why. Jen has presented a model that incorporates five hundred and thirty-three per student and fifty percent spend increase. And well, for sure, well, not even for sure, the joint finance comes out for second week, you know, that's not done deal too close in the House and Senate and. Will probably be in the July till it's certain, but at least for an annual meeting, we will know, but again. We have people that are deciding whether they wanna look for a different job based on our wages and we're. Gonna have to make some decisions tonight, but based on our best, best guess.
So I did include five hundred and fifty dollars per student, so I just kinda rounded it, usually they give us a nice round amount, so. Um, we'll just start right at the top, just like I have every year, kinda go through and try to segregate like all these different revenues, what does that? All these different revenues, what does that mean for us for next year? So the first thing we have is our three-year rolling average for students. Um, we should increase from about one thousand six hundred and forty to about one thousand six hundred and forty-four. That's assuming as thirty-eight um FTE for our summer school. And an increase of two FTE in our September count, which does tie back to our population study that we had done. Three years ago. Um, just a little side note on that, um, when going through that again. Starting next year is the first year they have us listed as having decreasing enrollment. So that's something, you know, in the future that might come up, but. One thing that has changed now also from this fiscal year to next fiscal year. Is the one point three million operating referendum that we passed and levied this year. It's baked into our per pupil revenue limit amount. So we were at ten thousand dollars per student. Now for next year, we'll be at the ten thousand eight twenty-three seventeen. So this year now we're living an additional three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Next year, that will also be added into our revenue limit. So that's how they do it. They make it in. So as your revenue increases or decreases, that amount actually does change a little bit as well. So that accounts for about forty-three thousand dollars in revenue. And then right underneath that, I have our um operational revenue limit increase of the three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The next three items kind of play together, our SR funding. So our SR two funding bucket will be fully spent at the end of this school year. Our SR three funding bucket will be mostly spent. I figured we're gonna have about two hundred and fifty thousand to carry over into next year. And then we have the entire amount of our EBIS grant that is still available. But that is the one that has the most restrictions on it. So it has to be used for evidence-based intervention strategies. And that's it. There's a list that's about a page and a half long. It has to fall on that list. In order to use that grant. Whereas SR two was much less restrictive. We could use it on a lot of different things. SR three had a portion that had to be used on EBIS and a portion that was less restrictive. So what this means for next year is we're not going to have four hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of SR two funding that we had this year. We're not going to have three hundred and ten thousand dollars of SR three funding that we had this year. But we are going to layer in that EBIS grant with all of our interventionists. Um, behavior interventionist, math interventionist, reading interventionist, we can put them into that EBIS grant. So you'll see that four hundred and forty thousand dollars coming in then as a revenue.
In gen, those were positions already, we weren't spending money to use it. It was positions that were already in the budget, but we can use these dollars to pay for it. So it frees up those dollars to do other things.
Correct, yes. But when this money is gone, then, yeah.
I get it.
Yeah. And the next line, that's where I added the five hundred and fifty dollars for per pupil adjustment aid. I think Tim had mentioned that was one of the things that the state had said they were leaning toward. Adding it into the per pupil adjustment aid instead of onto the revenue limit. So that's about nine hundred and ten thousand there. A few little things with open enrollment tuition. We're anticipating that our open enrollment is gonna stay relatively the same. I mean, I feel like we're increased a little bit last year, but when I looked at what we had talked about a few weeks ago on. In the meeting, our target for the virtual school is two point two million in revenue, which is very close to what they're. Gonna be at this year. So the increase that you see there is mostly just because of a copy increase in costs. We did hear that we're going to see an increase in our Title One funding, so that's gonna be about sixty thousand dollars. And then there's the categorical aids. So for special education. As Tim said, the state is talking about increasing categorical aid from thirty percent of our special ed costs. Mostly salaries and benefits that they aid. There are a few exceptions to that, but. Um, increasing that percentage to a fifty percent reimbursement. The issue is, is that we still have to transfer the same amount from Fund Ten into Fund Twenty-seven. That we did in the previous year. So even though I'm estimating that might give us six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our regular special ed costs are only gonna go up about a hundred and fifty for salary, hundred fifty. For salary increases. So that's why I put the hundred and fifty thousand off on the side. Because the other five hundred thousand will have to be increased expenditures. Cause we need to make sure that we need our maintenance of effort. We wanna have a conversation.
Hundred and fifty grand is about ninety bucks. We have sixteen hundred and two. So about, so the five fifty really is about six.
Is a little more, yeah.
Is about six.
Yeah.
It helps.
Yeah, yeah, it does. So then I assumed a one percent increase in our local revenues. Um, because we're, you know, seeing increases in some of our fees and different things that's calculated in the model. And I left our property value increases at eight percent that only affects the mill rate. One thing I did notice when I entered this into the Baird budget model is that our state aid actually is projected to dip. Down by almost a million dollars next year. And I'm not sure why that is. I need to do more research on it, but maybe they're gonna, maybe the state's planning to put. More money into the per pupil adjustment aid and not as much into the revenue limit formula. You know, to keep state aid at a certain percent. I'm not sure, but that was one of the things I noticed. So. In order to keep our mill rate at around that nine dollars and twenty cents, we can levy an additional six hundred and fifty thousand. In Fund Thirty-nine for mill rate stability like we have the past few years.
And is that available for operating or do we have to pay it down on debt?
It has to be for debt. Yeah.
So a little confusing in that.
It is.
Revenue available for budget and but that six fifty is only available to pay.
Yes, and I do have it listed as an expense as well, so it's going in and coming out on both sides, but I just wanted to make mention of that. So total increased revenue is about one point, close to one point nine million, but again, six hundred and fifty thousand of that is for debt only. Any other questions on the revenue piece? Okay, we'll move on to expenditures then. So for additional positions for next year. Um, we're looking at, or we have, I think, already approved a fourth grade elementary teacher. And and one FTE instructional coach. We also added a position for high school special ed teacher. But we are not gonna be hiring three pair of professionals, so it's kind of a wash as far as the cost goes. So. We are also increasing a few positions, mostly in the virtual school.
Excuse me, what's the instructional coach?
It's the the teacher of teachers at the elementary school.
Awesome.
Yeah, so the increased positions that are in the virtual school, we have. Two positions that'll increase from a point seven five to a one FTE. And then one position that will go from a point six to a point eight. And then the costs associated with that. The three percent sell increase, um, like we talked about during the, some of you that were involved in the meet and confer. Um, costing that out at seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, it's it's a little deceiving because I separated out those new positions. And what we'll talk about later, it has it kind of all lumped together. But for the actual sell increase, it would be about seven hundred and sixty thousand. Which then plays into, you know, some other life insurance and. FICA and the two percent contribution for 403B, all of those go up as well because they're a percentage. We're anticipating a eleven percent increase in January of twenty-four on our health insurance. The cost this year is is way down because if you remember for twenty-two, twenty-three. We were at a much higher rate. Our rates were reduced by seventeen percent starting in January. So just having those months of that higher rate in this year's budget. Means we only have to come up with less than around thirty thousand dollars next year, even if it does go up eleven percent. And we always have the option to sign, extend our contract with health partners and then sometimes they're willing to negotiate with us on that. Estimated five percent increase in dental insurance. So that's kind of the staff expenditures. And then you have the other object series, of course, that um prepayment of debt.
Some we can increase pay by a million bucks and not increase FICA.
Yeah, we did. It's calculated in there. I mean, it means the percentage is staying the same. Yeah.
And I saw no increase.
Yeah.
But it's just calculated in.
It's calculated in the model, so no increase in the percentage. Same thing with Wisconsin retirement. No increase in the percentage. Overall, it will increase. And the 403B as well for the the staff that are eligible for that. Any other questions on the salary benefit piece? Okay, so then we get down to the mill rate stability, six hundred and fifty thousand that we talked about earlier. Um, going through, just putting this together, going through a lot of those main budgets, the one thing that stuck out to me is. The increase in utility costs. So we're already over budget for this year. By about forty or fifty thousand. And next year, we have new space coming on.
You can't use that, that mill rates stability at six hundred and fifty thousand to pay your utilities?
No, it's only for net service.
And so this hundred thousand isn't attributable just to the new space. If we were already over budget, then we need more money.
Right, right. Utility costs increased this year more than we anticipated, so we're already over. And plus, we will have the 4K addition and the virtual school portion of the high school that is. Will be up and running for next year. So I'm estimating approximately a hundred thousand for that. Um, increased classroom and athletic supply budgets, just there's a few things that always come up every year. Not a large amount of money. Um, and then we had that new bus lease that we signed back in February. That FEMA starts in August, so we will have that. We plan to keep the special ed transfer the same as it is in twenty-two, twenty-three. Of course, that's contingent upon. The special ed categorical aid increasing to fifty percent. So that was a wash. And then a slight increase in our open enrollment out. We had more students than we, there were a few more students even this year, so our budget was a little shy. So we need to add some. And then, of course, I have some question marks there for our fund balance, thinking we need to put about two hundred thousand in. To keep our seventeen percent. But as you can see, the revenues and expenditures are very close. If you flip to the budget model after I inputted everything, it's showing that we have a surplus of about sixty-eight thousand. So I think some of the items that are calculated on my sheet are quantified in there. Um, and then with that six hundred and fifty thousand mill rate stability, it would keep our mill rate right around that nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Per thousand. Of course, considering an eight percent increase in property values, which we have been higher. I think our. No, I didn't put it on. Oh, I did. Ten point nine percent is our five-year average.
But that only helps pay down debt.
Well, it helps with the mill rate, so.
If we maintain the nine point two mill rate, that extra money can only be used.
Otherwise, our mill rate would drop.
So anybody watching, that's why we usually levy to that amount so that we can pay it on debt. When you could make a choice to make it four dollars, but we wouldn't be able to do what we've done in the past.
We the last rough standings would not have been possible. So. And I appreciate the extra work it takes to go from. Three percent to three point two or three point five or. Three hundred different contracts that you have to leave with pair, but if, you know, we budget on five fifty. And the state comes in at six hundred over seven hundred or something other than that. Can we kind of decide that that extra money is gonna go to compensation to move the three percent? Rather than a new position or, you know, surplus. I mean, to me. That's where it belongs. I mean, we we're woefully underpaying. If inflation's at eight percent, we can only do three. I'm hearing four and five in other districts. Now, that was before the budget.
It depends where there are other steps.
Yeah, keep in mind that overall, that three percent is probably closer to five or five and a half.
Okay.
So for teachers, it's pretty close to six. I didn't cost out support staff. I think it's.
I hope when you present to the people, that's what you tell them that.
Yes, we did.
Three percent, but it. In your pocket, in your, well, but the steps are. The steps are. Three or four years.
Right.
So it isn't every year like it used to be. So there's one and two year, you're fixed. And then three to seven, you're fixed or something like that. And then the steps are bigger, much bigger.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that's why I called it a per cell three percent increase, cause overall it is more. Um, but any individual person would see at a minimum three percent.
If there's remain in a cell.
Right.
And we adjusted a couple of support staff pace schedules as well, but we'll talk about if they're closed or.
Yeah.
And then the um.
To to, so that's baked in there as well.
And we this, when you talk about cells, so we have the masters plus groups are all in different cells. Have their own cells, so they would get the three percent in each of those cells.
Yeah.
That everyone will get a three percent rate, everybody, but then if you're moving within those steps, you'll get more. Math wise, more than three percent overall in the budget.
And one thing Tim and I did just talk about briefly the other day was if we set. Let's just say we go ahead and set a three percent per cell increase tonight. And we find out in even September or October, when we're setting the levy that are the amount we're going to get. From the state will be higher, then we can always go back and retro. That back to, like you said, and put it into staff compensation. It's not like. We have to live with it for the year. You know, we can always change it at a later date. However, then I think I freaked out. Some of the people in the office, cause it would be a considerable amount of work.
No, that's what I said. I appreciate that it'd be a lot of work. And but I don't think there's gonna be any. Person with a contract, that if you pay them more than their contract, they're gonna require you to redo the piece of paper. I mean, it might not.
Yeah.
Might not be as troublesome as you think, but you gotta keep track of it someplace.
Right. And we do have to redo the contracts, at least for teaching and admin, cause the. Auditors look at that and compare that to what we actually paid them.
Yeah.
So.
Best of the entered Skyward Employee. Best to be entered Skyward Employee Management for payroll, no matter what. That's all.
No, it's, it'll be work and, you know, lame medicine for lots of things, but that's. How in the world should we be asked to do a budget before they tell us when? So higher percentage of our budget, depends on them.
We'll be adding more staff. I mean, that decision had to be made. And it's like the, the, the fewest, the least staff we've added in eight years. But that, that, it'll, it would, any surplus if decided would go towards compensation.
Yeah. But if it's less, you still, you eat it, then sorry.
Then we eat it.
And we, and we've done that before.
We have to figure it out next year.
We've done that before where like when they did educational, we get credit for education and they overspent. We didn't say, okay, you, everybody else has to take a cut and pay. We.
Like we're less than forty grand. Go to bed and sand me into a big fundraiser with cookies.
Lots of cookies.
Eight graders, eight graders are good.
No more backpack program. They gotta boost the general budget. Yeah, there's a next time their donation is gonna be to the district.
Use that dude.
There you go. No, this is good work. It's, I mean, this is amazing. And you look at all the Baird stuff and it's, it's so amazingly complicated and to have such huge variables that we.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, thank you so much. And, you know, you and your team have kept us so fiscally strong that allowed, you know, referendums that didn't cost extra mill rate. This is, and I see all the other districts in the CISA, you know, and they have strong districts too, but so many of them. We had a woman that applied for the CISA director. That she was in a district with five hundred students and she was their business manager. The superintendent was the business manager. I mean, that's just the way a lot of school districts are. So good work.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
No vote on this. It's just for information and, you know, your vote on the wages, um, for close session.
So now we move on to Alf. And it's designated Simpson State Bank of Roberts as the official depository for the St. Chris Central School District.
So I'm hoping there's no decision to.
Second, the only thing I want to confirm is that we still have them put collateral for our stuff over the insurance limit?
Yes, they do.
So your FDIC only covers a couple hundred thousand and for public entities, they actually have to pledge collateral for our account balances over. So if we had a California bank failure, we would actually have.
The government's gonna.
They want to make sure of that. Otherwise, yeah, we couldn't keep, I mean, it, it wouldn't be anything. I mean, just that allows us to be there.
Yeah, they keep like five, four and a half to five million in collateral.
Yeah.
For us.
Good.
Okay, so the motion was by Vince.
Also then.
The second, second was already jumped.
I'll get the next one.
Okay. Okay. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
All right, motion carries. Uh, Citizen State Bank of Roberts is our official depository. He designate the official newspaper for the St. Chris Central School District.
Thanks. I think the Baldwin Bolton's done good. This last, this last year, the first year we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We actually got some coverage, so that was very nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Positive stuff for the students and stuff like. I would recommend we continue them. I just FYI, I, um, their, their publishers currently out for a little bit. But I asked, set up a meeting with them just, um, just to talk about two things, just to make sure he's aware of. Um, one is we were mistakenly overcharged. Kelly phoned out at the wrong rate. So at least we got a two thousand some dollars credit. Sixteen hundred, okay. Oh, just for like everything we have to post in.
Yeah, for a minute, yeah.
For class two notices and stuff, so.
Yeah.
They could, did you catch it or they catch it?
No, I did just because I noticed it was like very, very high.
Maybe, maybe we should consider going somewhere else. It's twice as much and she's reached out to him. So ooh, whoops.
It was almost three times as much as.
Oh. And then just, I wanted to, you know, about when there is coverage, conquer, you know. Don't show up at the board meetings or don't cover the board meetings that are.
Just negative.
Yeah, like negatives maybe, right?
Yeah.
And, and just, I just want to provide feedback on that reporter, um, you know, just make sure we have a relationship and cover all the stuff, not just the, because you're gonna sell the newspapers no matter what. That, that story didn't sell newspapers, right?
Unfortunately, that's just the world now, right?
Yeah, but, you know, again, if I'm the boss, I'd wanna know or have that conversation. So that's why I reached out to him. But no, I would still rerecommend we continue them. Like it's basically them or Hudson and we get good coverage.
Yeah, well, just the fact that you could, your phone call away from talking about that stuff is, is nice, right? You know.
Yeah.
Right, so we do need a motion?
Oh, motion then. Second. Said I got the next one.
So Lance made the motion to designate.
I only did it because.
Paper for the Baldwin, Publicans. And you got the next one. Dave Rose.
No, I'm not.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
All right, motion carries. Um, moving on to consideration of proposed board meeting dates for twenty-three, twenty-four. And everybody has those in front of you.
Confirmed with Lee, the four board development dates would work for him if they were. I'm seeing them to work for everybody. Those four dates we can commit to. Um, I wanna say the third was not a Sunday, but the rest were all Sundays. Um, regular meeting is pretty self-explanatory. Typically the third Wednesday with the exception of December because it's a short month, the holiday in January because of the, um, state convention. Um, and the annual meeting is actually set, um, by state statute unless you change it. We never have changed it. You know, just stick with July. It is uncommon. Um, most districts do later for the reasons we just talked about, to get closer and they wait till the students are in the seats and they can know exactly how many students there are and they got a better idea of staffing and who who actually, you know, is on staff and the stuff. But this is working for us really well and that's why it's July. It's the state.
We decide on, do we, are you still moving it back and forth?
It's in.
The location, the location.
Last year was high school. Year before it was here and elementary school was here. Uh, looking at those dates, uh, for board development, those work, they're in the calendars. Okay. And then regular meetings, um, just put those, I think Kelly will send out an invitation. Get those in your calendar and hopefully they can have attendance throughout the year. And so I guess we, we do need a motion to. Now, these is our board unit, our meeting dates.
I'll make that motion.
Right.
Second.
So Dave made the motion. Derek second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Motion carries, uh, to accept the proposed meeting dates for twenty-three, twenty-four. And we'll move on to the consideration, um, and approval of the second readings of the policies I through P.
I think you did.
I think the board president should read each one of those policies out loud.
That's what Howard would have done. I mean, he was a really good board president.
Motion to approve.
Well, my board members are all, they all read them and have the memorized.
Yeah, because you're throwing P in us.
So I don't need to read them.
Oh.
Oh, it's so awful.
Yeah.
Is there any?
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
I through P.
Approve what?
No. I through P. Sorry.
I would second that motion.
All right, so Derek made the motion. Jeff seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Close. And so those are carried. The second readings. So then we have consideration of the first readings of the policies, um, letters Q through X.
Tim, these are all from the.
Yeah, they either, they're all WASB either directly from their policy resource guide, which are vetted. Um, or if they're not, again, we take other districts ones and we make them basically fit us, what's applicable. Then we send it to the lawyers who vet them. So, yeah, they're all all, um, uh, vetted. And then first reading, you know, second readings again are for consideration once approved, they go into policy immediately. First readings are just a FYI, read through them. Let us know if you have any questions or clarification on things. Um, but yeah, I feel really confident about this process and that they're vetted by the legal team. That's what they do.
Right, any discussion on the first readings? Otherwise we can move to why I wish that consideration of approval of eliminating the board policies.
Move to, uh, approve elimination board policies, one through three solicited. Second.
All right, so Lance made the motion. Vince second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Close. Motion carries to lay out its board policies. Okay, so now are there any other future, future agenda items?
I don't know that it's a recurring agenda item, but I just heads up to the other board members. Our strategic planning committee has now had a couple of meetings. I anticipate that we will come back to the board with ideas to say, okay, here's what we've thought about. We'd like your input confirmation before we move to the next step. So I think as we move forward and that committee is trying to meet twice a month, so two weeks, we met tonight and then we'll meet in a couple of weeks. So I think we'll have lots of stuff to bring back to the board, but I think that just, whatever if it's a recurring.
Item eight.
Yeah, just a recurring item. And we, if nothing else, we just figured out data about what we're talking about.
Exactly.
Any other items? All right, none. Um, important upcoming dates. May twenty-sixth is our graduation ceremony at seven PM at the high school gym. Vince, Erica, myself and Josh are getting out diplomas that night.
There were three diplomas that I couldn't bring myself to sign. I'm sorry.
It's kind of cruel. It's kind of cruel to see names that you recognize. I mean, there's, some of them, they have like four or five names.
Simon was running late on assignment. I said, you're not signing it. And then he's like, well, you signed it. So now I can retract.
It is fun to do that.
Okay, and, uh, June second is the staff retirement and recognition event at two PM in the High School of Commons. And then we go into the auditorium, right?
And yeah, have dessert served by Panther Catering at two in the cafeteria and then go onto the auditorium. And it's, it's nice. If you, if you can make it, I strongly encourage it. It's just nice. Years of service in five, five-year increments. And we have one person that's gonna be receiving their forty-fifth year service award.
I mean, you're not even that old. While they were lost back then or something, non-existent.
So if, you know, if you can make it, stop in. Um, June twenty-first is our next school board meeting at seven here at the district office. All right, so we can enter into closed session and in motion.
Make motion to go into closed session pursuant to nineteen eighty-five, one F.
And?
And C. And is there any? That was two.
All right.
Second.
So Jeff made the motion. Lance second. And do roll call. So Derek?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye.